Hello, my name is Juan Pablo Cervantes. I'm the Humboldt County Clerk, Recorder, and Registrar of Voters. And today, we'll open a public hearing on our Humboldt County Election Administration Plan in accordance with the Voters' Choice Act. This is a process that started four years ago when we began the process to become Voters' Choice Act County. For this particular EAP, we started the process in March, and this is our first public hearing. For this version of the plan, we'll open another comment period in June, after which we will take in all comment, consider it, and hopefully adopt a final EAP in July of this year. With me today are Voitek Shoj, who is an Admin Analyst with our office, Genevieve Sirdam, also an Admin Analyst, Nicole Goldbach, our Elections Manager, and Christina Strivey, who is also an Administrative Analyst for our office. And I'll kick us off. We'll begin with the executive summary. The Humboldt County Office of Elections is committed to ensuring all eligible residents have an opportunity to exercise their right to vote, conducting elections in a fair, accurate, and efficient manner, and providing reliable information and the best possible services to voters, districts, candidates, and other interested parties. Due to evolving election laws and scarcity of accessible in-person voting facilities, the Office of Elections adopted the Voters' Choice Act Voting Model in 2023 to broaden voting options for the residents of Humboldt County. Since its implementation, the Office of Elections has conducted a presidential primary and a presidential general election with the VCA format. The VCA format allows voters to return their ballots by mail with prepaid postage, drop off their ballots at a ballot drop box, or vote at any vote center in Humboldt County. Select vote centers will be open for multiple days before, in addition to Election Day, including weekends. All Humboldt County Office of Elections ballot drop box locations and vote centers are safe and secure. The VCA voting model expands in-person voting services by enabling voters to visit any vote center across the county to cast a ballot rather than a single location based on their home address. At a vote center, a voter can register to vote or update voter registration information, receive in-facility and curbside assistance, use an accessible ballot marking device, and get help voting in multiple languages. For each election, the Office of Elections must provide voters with a minimum of nine vote centers. During the presidential primary election, two vote centers were open for 10 days prior to the election, seven vote centers were open for three days prior to the, uh, three days before the election, and three vote centers were open on Election Day only. During the presidential general elections, these locations were adjusted to two vote centers open for 10 day look, for 10 days before the election, six locations open for three days before Election Day, and five open for Election Day only. With each election, we exceeded the necessary minimum to ensure ample opportunities for registered voters to cast their ballot. The Office of Elections revised its Election Administration Plan, providing guidance on how the VCA voting model will be adapted based on the model's initial implementation in Humboldt County. In developing an updated EAP, the Office of Elections again collaborated with its Voter Accessibility Advisory Committee and Language Accessibility Advisory Committee to identify community groups with disabilities and language needs. Additionally, the Office held consultative meetings with the public to receive feedback on the EAP. After this initial feedback, the Office will provide the public with a second draft and five, final public com, comment period before submission to the Secretary of State to receive the final letter of approval, which will be posted to the website. The approved draft will then be transferred, translated into Spanish and Mong and made available on our website. Following the updated approval of the EAP, further renewals will take place every four years thereafter. Beginning in the spring of 2025, the Humboldt County Office of Elections began following the timeline for the EAP, Public Input and Submission. We began developing our renewed EAP draft in March of 2025. We're currently, uh, our, our first 14-day public comment period was in April of 2025. We held our first language and voter accessibility advisory meetings on April 30th of 2025, after which we developed educational and outreach materials. We're currently holding our public hearing in May. That includes virtual and in-person options. Our second 14-day public comment period will be in June with the intent to adopt a final EAP in July. The Secretary of State will be notify, uh, will notify of EAP approval, uh, in July, send vote, and will be sending vote by mail ballots to military overseas voters. April 18th of 2026, we'll send regular vote by mail ballots in May 4th of 2026. Vote centers will open for the gubernatorial primary on May 23rd of 2026, with Election Day being June 2nd of 2026. And I'll pass it over to Nicole.
Next in our plan, we delve into vote centers. So the Voters' Choice Act voting model requires that vote center locations be provided across the county, distance to provide one vote center for every 50,000 voters 10 days before an election, and one vote center for every 10,000 voters three days before an election. When possible, placement for vote centers will consider the following factors: proximity to public transportation, proximity to communities with historically low vote-by-mail usage, proximity to population centers, proximity to language minority communities, proximity to voters with disabilities, proximity to communities with low rates of vehicle ownership, proximity to low-income communities, proximity to community, proximity to communities of eligible voters that are not registered, proximity to geographically isolated populations, i.e. Native American reservations, access to free parking, distance and time a voter must travel to reach a location, the need for alternate voting methods for voters with disabilities, traffic patterns, the need for mobile vote centers in addition to those established by Senate Bill 450, and proximity to a public or private college or university campus. Humboldt County has approximately 84,300 active voters, which requires the Office of Elections to have a minimum of nine total vote centers, eight of which must be open for a minimum of four days and two that must be open for 10 days. We additionally provide four one-day pop-up vote centers on Election Day only. Vote centers will be open eight hours for each early day of voting from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and on Election Day from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The Office of Elections employed siting software from the Center of Inclusive Democracy to determine recommended placement of vote centers based on required considerations. Recommended locations for vote centers include Hoopa, McKinleyville, Arcata, Eureka, Fortuna, and Garberville. Due to high voter populations and for voter convenience, the Office of Elections will provide 13 vote centers across Humboldt County. This will include one vote center open for 29 days before an election, two vote centers 10 days before an election, six vote centers three days before an election, and four one-day pop-up vote centers to serve rural communities and high voter populations on Election Day only. Due to the county's rural geography, a mobile vote center is being considered and will be implemented based on available funding. The vote center locations are the Humboldt County Office of Elections, open 29 days prior to Election Day, in Arcata, oh, excuse me, Arcata Community Center and Fortuna Veterans' Memorial Building, open 10 days before Election Day, Cal Poly Humboldt specifically in the Jolly Giant Commons, College of the Redwoods Gym 100K, Humboldt County Office of Education Annex Building, Jefferson Community Center, Monument Middle School, and McKinleyville Middle School, all open for three days before an Election Day, and Hoopa Neighborhood Facility, the County Fairgrounds, Redwood Playhouse, and Eureka Veterans Memorial Hall, all open on Election Day only. For staffing, vote centers will be staffed with a minimum of six staff members, including a vote center manager, a support and support team members. Staff members will be training, will be trained on general voting equipment, accessible voting equipment, and election information management software. Training will also include best practices, etiquette, and sensitivity training to assisting voters with disabilities as well as bilingual and non-English language speakers. Recruitment for staffing will begin in the winter of 2025, when the Office of Elections will be, will begin attending community job fairs and workshops to educate potential staff on elections operations. Additional efforts to collaborate with nonprofit organizations serving language minorities and disable, disabled voters will be made to ensure potential staff is equipped to assist voters. Humboldt County currently does not offer additional compensation to election workers who are multilingual. And following me will be Christina.
Next, we will be going into design and layout. Vote centers will be designed to provide voters with the most accessible, private, and independent voting experience possible. Voting stations and supplies will be strategically placed and clearly marked to provide a smooth flow through the voting area. Accessibility aids and services will be clearly marked or clearly communicated by vote center staff and posted signage through, although specific vote center design and layout will vary slightly from one location to another, Appendix F provides an ideal locate polling location designed to guide vote center setup. Each vote center location will provide an individualized accessibility guide to ensure that it is set up and are set up properly. Security and contingency plans. The Office of Elections has established security and contingency procedures to ensure continuity of vote center activities in the most secure manner possibility. Ensuring security of voting. The Humboldt, uh, the Office of Elections is committed to ensuring the integrity and security of elections in Humboldt County. The Office follows process and procedural standards that stringently follows federal and state laws to administer secure, fair, and accurate elections in the most time and cost-efficient manner. Some of the processes and procedures standards are employed are, include: vote center staff training. Vote center staff will receive voting equipment and election information management software training. Vote center access to election information management software. Vote center staff will use provided laptops to access the EIMS Lite, a limited version of the election information management software used at the Office of Elections for voter registration. Vote center staff will verify voter activity via the Secretary of State's secure VoteCal database and ensure issue ballots accordingly. Laptops will be connected to the internet using secure technology compliant with California's Code of Regulations 20158. Voting equipment is a closed system. Hart Verity voting equipment is a paper-based voting system that is never connected to the internet. Voting equipment chain of custody. The chain of custody refers to keeping complete control of all equipment from the time that it has been out for an election until it has been returned to the Office of Elections and had its votes recorded. Equipment. Security seals will be affixed to the voting equipment at the time it is programmed for an election. Voting equipment will have affixed security seals and will be stored in a securely locked metal caddy whenever in a vote center and the polls are suspended or closed. Security seal logs will, shall be maintained of the serially numbered seals. Security seals will be verified and logged at each handoff point along the chain of custody. Voted ballots and voting equipment containing vote counts will be transported securely to the Office of Elections by two elections officials. Vote center design. Vote centers will be designed to ensure voting equipment is always in the sightline of staff. Live voting equipment will never be left unattended. Voting equipment battery backup. Voting equipment either has an internal battery backup or an uninterrupted power source, UPS, to ensure continuity of voting in the event of a power outage. On-call voting equipment troubleshooting. The Office of Elections shall provide real-time troubleshooting support to vote centers to ensure the integrity and continuity of voting equipment performance. Voting equipment in, incident reports. Vote center staff will report voting equipment incidents to the Office of Elections immediately and complete forms documenting the incident in detail. Preventions, measures, and potential disruptions. Vote center staff will receive training and guidance on how to respond to the potential disruptions, natural disasters, and emergency situations, including but not limited to fires prior to or on voting days, earthquakes prior to or on or during voting days, planned and unplanned power outages, life-threatening emergencies at the vote center, and voter intimidation. Alternate vote center locations will be identified and reserved in the event that a primary vote center becomes unusable. Vote center staff will have an emergency phone line to the Office of Elections in the event of an emergency. A full description of potential disruptions and responses is attached as a pendant G. Next will be Genevieve.
Section 3, Ballot Drop Boxes. Requirements and Considerations. The Voters' Choice Act voting model requires that official ballot drop-off locations be provided across the county, distance to provide one ballot drop box for every 15,000 voters. Secure, accessible, and locked ballot drop boxes must be in a place, must be in place and ready to receive voted ballots no less than 28 days prior to an election. Drop boxes will be placed indoors where they can be observed by staff throughout business hours. Outside of business hours, boxes will be locked securely indoors. A minimum of one ballot drop box must be open for 12 hours each day. When possible, placement of drop boxes will consider the following factors: proximity to public transit, proximity to communities with historically low vote-by-mail usage, proximity to population centers, proximity to language minority communities, proximity to voters with disabilities, proximity to communities with low rates of vehicle ownership, proximity to low-income communities, proximity to communities of eligible voters that are not registered, proximity to geographically isolated populations, i.e. Native American reservations, access to free parking, time and distance a voter must travel to each to reach a location, the need for alternate voting methods for voters with disabilities, traffic patterns, and proximity to a public or private college or university campus. Humboldt County has approximately 34,008, 84,300 active voters, which requires the Office of Elections to have a minimum of six ballot drop boxes, and one of these drop boxes must be open for 12 hours a day for no less than 28 days before Election Day. The Office of Elections employed siting software from the Center for Inclusive Democracy to determine recommended placement of ballot drop boxes based on required considerations. Recommended locations for ballot drop boxes include Willow Creek, McKinleyville, Arcata, Eureka, Fortuna, and Garberville. Ballot drop box locations. Due to the terrain and rural positioning of many communities in Humboldt County, the Office of Elections will provide 11 drop-off locations across the county as follows. In Arcata, three locations, Eureka, two locations, one location in Fortuna, in McKinleyville, two locations, one location in Redway, one location in Trinidad, and one location in Willow Creek. The Humboldt County Office of Elections has partnered with local store chains to provide ballot drop boxes in secure and accessible locations. All ballot drop boxes will be open for at least 12 hours each day. The following locations in Willow Creek are Ray's Food Place, in Trinidad, Murphy's Market, in McKinleyville, Ace Hardware and Murphy's Market, in Arcata, the Murphy's Market on Bayside Road, and the Murphy's Market on West Side Court, and the Ray's Food Place on Valley West Boulevard. In Eureka, the Office of Elections and Murphy's Market on Walnut Drive. In Fortuna, Ray's Food Place on Main Street, and in Redway, the Shop Smart on Redwood
Now we'll discuss accessible voting options, starting with remote access vote by mail. Remote, remote accessible vote by mail, or RAVBM, is an accessible and secure web-based system that enables voters to access, mark, and print ballot materials at home to assist in their voting experience. RAVBM enables voters with disabilities, many of whom rely on others to assist them in reading and marking their ballot, to complete their vote privately and independently from home. RAVBM is not internet voting and is available to all voters for all elections. RAVBM ballots can be accessed via the Voting Options section of our website, humboldt.gov.org/elections. After an RAVBM ballot is requested, they are printed, then marked at home to be returned in person or mailed to the Office of Elections. RAVBM ballots returned by mail can be placed in the voter's personally sourced envelope, or it can be returned in the county-provided vote by mail envelope. Humboldt County uses Democracy Live software to operate our vote, RAVBM system, which also allows all active registered voters to access to their county voter information guide with sample ballot. Ballot marking devices. Verity Touchwriter supports accessible voting through a tethered slash attached audio tactile interface, or ATI, which is a game controller-style console that includes a rotary wheel to move through the ballot, a select button to mark choices, and other tactile navigation buttons. The ATI can also support headphones for voters who are blind or visually impaired, or paddles or sip-and-puff devices for voters with dexterity impairments. Verity Touchwriter does not have scanning or tabulating capabilities. It is a ballot marking device only. Tactile envelope signature marker. Beginning November of 2023, the official return envelope for Humboldt County vote-by-mail ballots featured a tactile marker in the form of two hole punches on the back of the ballots near the signature line. This feature was added and is as an accessibility measure for those who require assistance locating the signature line on their ballot. Curbside voting. Each vote center is equipped with a call bell that is located on the driver's side of the nearest accessible parking space to the vote center entrance. This call bell, when pressed, alerts smoker, workers in the vote center of a voter that needs to have their ballot brought to their vehicle. Alternate devices such as carts to allow voters to utilize a ballot marking device are being tested by counties in California for accessibility. Humboldt County will collaborate with counties on a best method of these, of these alternate devices as they become available. And I'll pass it back off to Juan.
Cost analysis and resource allocation. The Office of Elections projected an overall cost savings and a decrease in expenditures from '22, '23 to '23, '24. A full breakdown of the comparison of expenditures to projected allocations can be seen in Appendix F. Short-term and long-term cost savings. The Humboldt County Office of Elections determined that budget, budgeted costs for implementing the VCA will be less than the prior non-VCA budget. While this is not typical for most election departments, our office has implemented other unique cost savings that are the contribute, that are the contributing factors to our lower-cost startup. In addition, the Office of Elections predicts that over time, conducting elections in accordance with the VCA will encourage savings. This prediction is based on evidence from Colorado, which implemented a similar elections model. According to a report published by the Pew Charitable Trusts, election costs declined 40% on average after the implementation of Colorado's Voters, Voters Access and Modernization Elections Act of 2013. Estimated short-term costs include purchasing ballot-on-demand printers for all vote centers that will enable staff to print all ballot types within the county for each specific election. Included in short-term costs are the purchasing of laptop computers for vote center staff to process voters directly. In the election information management system, additional short-term costs include, but are not limited to: secure internet connections at all vote centers, extensive training for staff, purchasing of additional ballot drop boxes, and facility rentals. Anticipated long-term savings include decreased costs for equipment, including purchasing of new equipment, equipment maintenance, ballot printing, and labor. Okay, get it over to Genevieve.
Section 6, Voter Education and Outreach Plan. Media and Public Service Announcements. The Humboldt County Office of Elections uses a variety of media and public service announcements in accessible formats to educate the voting population in Humboldt County, to promote the availability of an accessible vote-by-mail ballot and how to request one. Media will include, but will not be limited to: newspapers, radio, television, and social media. These newspapers will include Time Standard, Mad River Union, The North Coast Journal, and The Two Rivers Tribune, online news sources such as The Lost Coast Outpost and Redheaded Black Belt, radios such as K-Hum, KZZH, KHSU, K-Mud, and KINS, television including Key TV, KIEM TV, and Access Humboldt, and social media platforms such as Facebook and Instagram. Community Presence for Voter Education. The Humboldt County Office of Elections will educate voters in Humboldt County by having a community presence. The Humboldt Count, Humboldt County Elections partners with established community-based organizations to reach their target audience via newsletters, emailing, social media, websites, and/or events. Types of organizations the Office of Elections will reach out, will reach out to consist of, but will not be limited to: the legal women voters, assisted living facilities, cohousing, fraternal organizations, homeowners associations, local businesses, mobile home parks, nonprofits, political organizations, retirement homes, and schools. These organizations will receive official media produced by the Office of Elections for purpose of educating, for education and outreach. The Office of Elections will emphasize the availability of an accessible vote-by-mail ballot and how to request one, focusing on key organizations such as Tri County's Independent Living Center, North Coast Regional Center, and Meals on Wheels. Election Administration Plan Public Hearing. On May 15th, the Office of Elections hosted a public hearing at the Arcata Council Chambers to review the election administration plan and take comment from the public. This public hearing took place after a 14-day online public comment period where the EAP Draft 1 was available on the Office of Elections website for review. The written public comment was summarized and responded to at the public meeting. The EAP public hearing was available for the public to attend both in person and on Zoom to help increase engagement and ease of attendance. The Office of Elections partnered with Access Humboldt to livestream the meeting on public access television as well as YouTube. A recording of the full public hearing is available on the Access Humboldt YouTube channel. Direct Contact with Voters. Humboldt County Elections will send two direct contact mailers to voters for purposes of informing them of upcoming election and promoting the toll-free voter assistance hotline. These contacts will be in addition to other required contacts with voters, including but not limited to voter information guides and the delivery of vote-by-mail ballots. One direct contact will be mailed to registered voters in March of 2026, informing them that a vote-by-mail ballot will be sent to all registered voters regardless of vote-by-mail preference. Other mailing will be sent in May of 2026, after ballots have been mailed informing voters of their voting options at vote centers if they prefer to vote in person, and options for returning their vote-by-mail ballots. Outside of direct mailers, staff creates social media posts, printed materials, infographic videos, and radio ads in Spanish, Mong, and English to further engage voters in specific Voters' Choice Act information. Accessible Website with Voter Resources. The Humboldt County Office of Elections website, www.humboldt.gov.org/elections, is an accessible website per standards recommended in Elections Code, Code 2053B4. The Office of Elections will work with the Humboldt County Information Technology Staff to ensure that all election information is available in text-based format on an accessible website. Information includes but will not be limited to: a list of ballot drop-off locations, vote centers with dates and hours for when they are open, as well as services available at vote centers. The website will also include information on accessible voting tools like ballot marking devices at vote centers and remote access vote by mail, as well as translated election education material. Resources for Voter Education and Outreach. Humboldt County Office of Elections will spend the necessary resources on voter education and outreach to ensure that voters are fully informed on the election conducted in accordance with the Voters' Choice Act. See Appendix F for comparison of the 2023 to 24 actual expenditures and the 2025 to '26 budget. Christina?
Section 7, Voter Education and Outreach Plan, Voters with Disabilities. In spring of 2025, the Humboldt County Office of Elections began focusing the efforts of its Voter Accessibility Advisory Committee, the VAC, to organize specifically around educational outreach to the disability community. The committee members are well-connected to the disability community and will continue to assist the Office of Elections in developing plans to best serve voters with disabilities in Humboldt County. The Office has collaborated with disability advocacy groups like Tri County Independent Living and Disability Rights of California to ensure that the Voters' Choice Act outreach and planning steps achieve the highest level of accessibility for the disability community. Addressing Disparities for, in voter access and participation. After every election that is conducted in compliance with the Voters' Choice Act, the Humboldt County Office of Elections will make a reasonable effort to address significant disparities in voter accessibility and participation. The Office of Elections will meet with the Humboldt County Voter Accessibility Advisory Committee, VAC, to address any issues that arose during the election. Furthermore, the Office of Elections will survey all vote center staff to evaluate and address any disparities regarding voter accessibility and participation. The Office of Elections has partnered with the Humboldt Transit Authority, HTA, The Office of Elections has partnered with the Humboldt Transit Authority, HTA, to provide adjusted routes during the election period to make access to vote centers via public transportation easier. Additionally, the HTA has offered free advertising of the Voters' Choice Act and vote center information on its buses, micro, and para and transit vehicles. Section eight. Voter Education and Outreach Plan, Bilingual and Non-English Language Voters. In spring of 2025, the Humboldt County Office of Elections began focusing its efforts of the Language Accessibility Advisory Committee, LAC, to organize specifically around educational outreach to the minority language community. The committee members are well-connected to the Spanish and Mong bilingual and non-English language community and will continue to assist the Office of Elections in developing plans to best serve language minority voters in Humboldt County. Media and Public Service Announcements. Presently, there is only one Spanish-language publication and one Spanish-language radio broadcast in Humboldt County. These are El Lenyador and Radio Blingue, which are two media sources hosted by the local university, Cal Poly Humboldt. Due to their longstanding presence in the community, these sources act as the primary news outlets for Spanish speakers in the county at large. Additionally, we are creating social media posts, printed materials, and video content in Spanish and Mong languages. These public service announcements will include general information about the VCA such as vote center services and locations, as well as how to contact our office for voter assistance. And we'll go on to Nicole.
Thank you, Christina. Section nine speaks to our Voter Education Outreach Plan for underserved communities. On outreach to student populations, the Office of Elections is working with the civic engagement coordinators at local institutions, Cal Poly Humboldt, and College of the Redwoods to engage in student voter outreach. Our first area of collaboration will be outreach to students aged 16 to 18 to preregister and register to vote and learn more about the vote center model. We also make our office available for regular tours with high school students as a part of their civics classes. Additionally, a vote center will be placed on the local community college and university campuses. At the regional university, Cal Poly Humboldt, voter participation exceeds that of most other colleges according to the 2020 National Study of Learning, Voting and Engagement, NSLV-E, otherwise known. This is shown in Figure Three within our Election Administration Plan. To leverage the high levels of civic engagement from students at Cal Poly Humboldt, our office plans to hold outreach workshops and events on the Cal Poly Humboldt campus by partnering with university's Student Life and Event Services and Civic Engagement Coordinator. During the 2024 Presidential General Election, our office hosted a vote center on campus in order to increase voting engagement and ease of voting among students. On Outreach to Jails. The Humboldt County Office of Elections offers training and materials to a liaison from the Humboldt County Jail every six months to ensure jail populations have up-to-date and accurate information when voting. Materials include voter registration cards, eligibility information, and materials to train other jail staff on the proper completion of voter registration. On community events, the Humboldt County Office of Election is taking part in several community events to reach voters at large, including Black Humboldt's Juneteenth Celebration, Bigfoot Days in Willow Creek, Sovereign Days for the Hoopa Valley Tribe, the Humboldt County Fair, weekly outreach at Friday Night Market in Eureka, and more. Next, we get into the appendix portion of our Election Administration Plan. In Appendix A, we speak on the Voting Accessibility Advisory Committee Overview and Purpose. What is the Voting Accessibility Advisory Committee? The Voting Accessibility Advisory Committee, also known by its acronym VAAC or VAC, is comprised of local government and community members. The purpose of the Humboldt VAC is to assist the Office of Elections in ensuring vote centers meet accessibility guidelines determined by the Secretary of State. Individuals interested in joining the VAC can find the committee application on the Voter Accessibility section of the Humboldt County's Voters' Choice Act webpage, Mission Statement. The VAC of Humboldt County seeks to set reasonable achievable goals for making vote centers within the County of Humboldt accessible to all voters, establish realistic timelines for identifying accessibility issues, develop mitigation measures, and provide ongoing review of polling places. What is the role of VAC? Members of the VAC meet periodically to review site accessibility surveys conducted by the Office of Elections, advising county elections officials on the placement of voting equipment, recognition of barriers to participation by elderly voters and voters with disabilities, and mechanisms to eliminate or mitigate the impact of these barriers to accessibility. Members additionally evaluate inaccessible vote centers or voting areas to determine if application of specific temporary modifying measures would make the vote centers accessible. Background Summary. For decades, the Office of Elections has reviewed facilities for accessibility and submitted survey reports to the VAC for input. In 2005, the Elections Office developed a four-year ADA compliance plan based on the randomly selected survey review by Tri County Independent Living Incorporated. In 2013, the Office of Elections spearheaded a comprehensive facility review to update usability statuses and mitigation necessary for use. In recent years, several facilities notified the Office of Elections they could no longer serve the community as facilities for voters. The Office of Election continues to research potential replacement facilities in these communities and conduct accessibility surveys. Appendix B. Language Accessibility Advisory Committee Overview and Purpose. What is the Language Accessibility Advisory Committee? The Language Accessibility Advisory Committee, also known by its acronym LAAC or LAC, is comprised of local government and community members. The purpose of the Humboldt LAC is to assist the Office of Elections in ensuring voting materials meet Language Accessibility Guidelines determined by the U.S. Department of Justice and Secretary of State. Individuals interested in joining the LAC can find the committee application on the Language Accessibility section of Humboldt County Voters' Choice Act webpage, Mission Statement. The LAC of Humboldt County seeks to set reasonable achievable goals for making voting materials within the County of Humboldt accessible to all voters to establish realistic timelines for identifying accessibility issues and developing mitigation measures. What is the role of LAC? Members of the LAC meet periodically to provide feedback on voter outreach materials, election materials, online materials, messaging strategies, outreach opportunities, and bilingual poll worker recruitment. Members of the LAC must have either a demonstrated knowledge of a language spoken by 3% or more of Humboldt County's voting age population, or experience working with communities who speak a covered language. Background Summary. In 1975, U.S. Congress added Section 203 Language Minority Citizens to the Voting Rights Act to protect the voting rights of language minorities Americans. Section 203 requires that registration or voting notices, forms, instructions, assistance, or other materials or information relating to the electoral process, including ballots, be provided to voters in jurisdictions or political subdivisions that meet certain criteria. Enacted in 1994, California Elections Code Section 14201 requires that when 3% or more of the voting age population or jurisdiction or political subdivision are language minority citizens, the elections official shall provide facsimile copies of ballot measures and ballot instructions printed in Spanish or other applicable languages. In 2016, SB 450 was passed by the California Legislature requiring counties participating in the California Voters' Choice Act, also known as VCA, election model to establish a Language Accessibility Advisory Committee before an election can be held. Appendix C is a series of a series of maps generated by the Center for Inclusive Democracy, also known as CID, that display criteria used for citing vote centers and ballot drop box locations. C1 is a map of public transportation stops. You will see in the map, the green dots depict the spots where public transportation. C2 is a map of vote by mail usage. You will see it is color-coded with yellow being the lower percentage and getting progressively darker blue with higher percentage. C3 is a map of population density, again in the same color coding, where the population density per square kilometer on the lower end is yellow, as it gets higher, gets progressively darker. C4 is a map of language minority population. This again is color-coded with the percentage of limited English proficient percent of population starting at the lowest with yellow and getting progressively darker as the percentage gets higher. C5 is a map of disability population. The disability's percent of population is color-coded again with yellow being the lower percentage of population and gets progressively higher as the color gets darker. C6 is a map of vehicle ownership. The percent of population with vehicle access, the lower populations are in yellow and get progressively darker blue with the higher population percentage. C7 is a map of population in poverty. The percentage of population in poverty is color-coded again with yellow being the lower percentage and getting progressively darker with the higher percentage of population. In there is a C8, which is alternative vote centers. The Office of Election has secured additional backup vote centers that will be used in an event of a vote center becoming unavailable. In McKinleville, our backup vote centers are Azalea Hall and the Center. In Arcata, the Arcata Veterans Memorial Building and Arcata High School. In Fortuna, we have the Jean Lucas Community Center, and in Blue Lake, Prash Hall.
Next, we'll be going over a graphic of vote center design and layout. This is Appendix D. If you're looking at the graphic, then you'll note that most, this particular one is Fortuna Veterans Memorial Building, and it was how they were set up during the primary in 2024. You'll see that there is an entry on the lower end of the page, and then there is a foyer there that they used to have their drop box, but it was within range and sight of the greeter who was there in the foyer as well to indicate where voters should go for checking in. They did check in along the left side of the room, and they issued their ballot on the print-on-demand, the upper end as well. On the far end of the room, there are three Verity Touchwriter accessible marking devices, and there will be three at each of the vote centers available throughout the end time that the vote center is open. There were also polling booths so that once you have your ballot and you're ready to mark it, you can go over to the polling booth and do that. If you need the accessible marking device, then you can go to the touchwriter at the far end of the room and mark your vice there, and then you take it to the bottom right-hand corner, which is where the ballot box is. Your ballot is scanned through the ballot box, and then you exit the room. As it is, the ballots are always within line sight of the workers there in the office. And we'll go on to Voitec.
Moving on to Appendix E, Potential Disruptions and Responses. The Office of Elections provides instructional training and written procedures to guide vote center staff in the event of emergency. In the event of a vote center becomes non-operational due to fire, earthquake, or power outage, the Office of Elections will contact the vote center staff affected. The vote center manager will contact remaining team members immediately to provide information about work assignments, relocations, and any other changes or important information about their assignment, team, and vote center. In the case of non-operational due to fire, if a fire makes a vote center inaccessible, an alternate vote center will be assigned. If possible, signage will be placed outside the non-operational vote center to notify voters of the location change. Fire occurs prior to voting beginning. The Office of Elections will contact the manager of affected vote centers to provide information about the alternate vote center and make arrangements for voting equipment and supplies to be delivered to the alternate vote center location. The vote center manager will contact remaining team members to provide information about work assignments, relocations, and any other changes or important information about their assignment, team, and vote center. The Office of Elections will provide press releases to the public for any changes in vote center locations and how to access voting services. If a fire occurs during voting. If a fire occurs during voting days, the Office of Elections will direct vote center workers to put safety first. Contact 911 first, then contact the Office of Elections immediately on the emergency hotline. If the vote center must be evacuated, the vote center manager will work with emergency personnel to ensure everybody, everyone gets out of the facility safely. If there is no imminent danger to personnel safety, the team leader should attempt to protect the integrity of the voting process, voting equipment, and voting materials to the extent possible by doing the following. Call the Office of Elections on the emergency hotline for emergency instructions. Record the public counter numbers on each voting machine. Unplug voting machines and move them to a safe location. Gather and secure the ballot box containing voted ballots, roster binders, team binder, and other equipment and move it to a safe location. If possible, all materials should be removed in teams of two. To document the event. When it is safe to do so, a member of the leadership team should complete an accident/incident report documenting the event. If any voting equipment was damaged, complete a voting equipment incident report form documenting the damage. And I'll pass it off to Genevieve.
Non-operational due to earthquake. If an earthquake occurs and makes a vote center inaccessible, an alternate vote center will be assigned. If possible, signage will be placed outside of the non-operational vote center to notify voters of location changes. If an earthquake occurs prior to voting beginning, the Office of Elections will contact the manager of vote centers affected to provide information about the alternate vote center and make arrangements for voting equipment and supplies to be delivered to the alternate vote center locations. The vote center manager will contact remaining team members to provide information about work assignments, relocations, and any other changes or important information about their assignment, team, and vote center. The Office of Elections will provide press releases to the public for any changes in vote center locations and how to access voting services. If an earthquake occurs during voting. If an earthquake occurs during voting days, the Office of Elections will direct vote center workers to put safety first. Do not evaluate the effects of the earthquake on the facility unless it is safe to do so. If the earthquake causes injury or property damage, contact 911 first, then contact the Office of Elections immediately on the emergency hotline. If the vote center must be evacuated, the vote center manager will work with emergency personnel to ensure everyone gets out of the facility safely. If there is no imminent danger to personal safety, the manager should attempt to protect the integrity of the voting process, voting equipment, and voting materials to the extent possible by doing the following. Call the Office of Elections on the emergency hotline for immediate instructions. Record the public counters on each voting machine. Unplug voting machines and move them to a safe location. Gather and secure the ballot box containing voted ballots, roster binders, team binder, and other equipment and move it to a safe location. If possible, all materials should be removed in teams of two. Document the event. When it is safe to do so, the vote center manager will complete an accident or incident report documenting the event. If any voting equipment was damaged, they will also complete a voting equipment incident report, excuse me, voting equipment incident report form documenting the damage. Christina?
Unplanned Power Outage. If an unplanned power outage occurs, vote centers may remain open. Vote center teams would use the emergency ballots available, have voters deposit them into a ballot box, voting equipment, scan touchwriters' ballot on demand, and have a two-hour battery backup to print further ballots. Printers that serve as touchwriters and ballot on demand are connected to an uninterrupted power supply battery backup that provides a two hours of uninterrupted power. Power outage occurs prior to when the voting begins. The Office of Elections will contact the manager of vote centers provided to provide the information about whether the vote center will remain open or be moved to an alternate location and arranged for voting equipment and supplies to be delivered to an alternate vote center location. The Office of Elections will provide press releases to the public for any change in vote center locations and how to access voting services. If the power outage occurs during the voting days, the Office of Elections will direct vote center workers to put safety first. If the power outage causes injury or property damage, then contact 911 first, then contact the Office of Elections immediately on the emergency hotline. If no injuries or damage are caused by the power outage, contact law enforcement on a non-emergency phone number, and then the Office of Elections. Document the event. The vote center managers will complete The Vote Center managers will complete an incident/accident report documenting the event. If voting equipment was damaged, the manager will complete a voting equipment incident report form documenting the damage. For a planned public safety power shut-off. If the planned public safety power shut-off, commonly known as a PSPS, occurs, Vote Centers may remain open. Vote Center teams would use the ballots pre-printed that have had there at the Vote Center and have voters deposit them into the ballot box. Voting equipment, touch scans, touchwriters, and ballot on demand do have the two-hour battery backup. Printers that serve as touchwriters and ballot on demand are connected to an uninterrupted power supply battery backup unit that provides two hours of uninterrupted power. The Office of Elections will contact managers of the Vote Centers provided affected to provide information about whether the Vote Center will remain open or be moved to an alternate power Vote Center location and make arrangements for voting equipment, ballots, and supplies to be delivered to the alternate Vote Center location. The Office of Elections will provide press releases to the public for any changes in Vote Center locations and how to access the voting services. And on to Nicole.
Thank you. Emergency at the Vote Center. If an emergency occurs during voting days, the Office of Elections will direct Vote Center workers... Oh, the Office of Elections will direct Vote Center workers "put safety first." If a medical issue or life-threatening emergency occurs, or if de-escalation is unsuccessful, contact law enforcement at 911. Then contact the Office of Elections immediately on the emergency hotline to report the emergency. Vote Center team binders also include an emergency contact and resource list by geographical region. If the Vote Center must be evacuated, the Vote Center manager will work with emergency personnel to ensure everyone gets out of the facility safely. If there is no imminent danger to personal safety, the team leader should attempt to protect the integrity of the voting process, voting equipment, and voting materials, to the extent possibly to the extent possible by doing the following. Call the Office of Elections on the emergency hotline for immediate instructions. Record the public counter numbers on each voting machine. Unplug voting machines and move them to a safe location. Gather and secure the ballot box containing voted ballots, roster binders, team binder, and other equipment and move it to a safe location. If possible, all materials should be removed in teams of two. Inaccessible Election Night Drop-Off Location. If an election night ballot drop-off location becomes inaccessible, the Office of Elections should be contacted immediately on the election emergency hotline. If an election night ballot drop-off ballot drop-off location becomes inaccessible and Vote Center teams cannot drop off ballots and voting equipment, the team the team of two members transporting ballots and voting equipment should bring them directly to the Office of Elections located at 242663 in Eureka. Electioneering. In accordance with California election law, electioneering is strictly prohibited within 100 feet of the entrance of a Vote Center room where voting is taking place. To ensure prohibited electioneering activities are not performed within 100 feet of the voting area, signs with code language will be posted visibly in and around the Vote Center. Staff will be trained on communicating electioneering law to voters and given written protocol on how to best ensure compliance from voters, along with steps on processing voters who refuse to comply with electioneering law.
In the case of voter intimidation. Voter intimidation is illegal and is a serious offense. It is a felony if any person makes use of or threatens to make use of any force, violence, or tactic of coercion or intimidation to induce or compel any other person to vote or refrain from voting at any election, or to vote or refrain from voting for any particular person or measure at any election, or because any person voted or refrained from voting at any election, or voted or refrained from voting for any particular person or measure at any election. While acts of voter intimidation may happen in and around Vote Center, in and around a Vote Center, immediate vicinity, they may occur anywhere. For example, examples of voter intimidation may include blocking access to Vote Centers, threatening criminal action against voters, presenting false information about voter eligibility requirements, including criminal consequences for voting. Examples given: credit card debt, arrest warrant, checks, et cetera. Harassing or threatening behavior, including aggressive questioning of voters based on a person's race, gender identity, or aggressively questioning voters about their citizenship, criminal record, or other qualifications to vote. Challenging voters' right to vote. Presenting false information to voters about the voting process and requirements, including the ability to speak English or the need to present certain types of photo identification. Assault, battery, threats of violence, brandishing of weapons. Security guards and law enforcement and firearms. It is a felony for any person to possess a firearm at a voting location or in the immediate vicinity of a Vote Center. Similarly, it is illegal for any uniformed peace officer, private guard, or security personnel, or any person who is wearing a uniform of a peace officer, guard, or security personnel to be stationed at or in the immediate vicinity of a voting location without written authorization of the election official. That's Elections Code 18544. Additionally, it is also a felony for any person or entity to hire or arrange for the prohibited activity in Elections Code 18544. That's the previous one. Note: These prohibitions do not in any way prevent a law enforcement officer or an unarmed uniformed security guard from voting. Shirts, hats, or other displays that indicate a person is with election security, or ballot security, or apparel or accessories with any semblance of a local logo or display that may be confused with any private guard or security company or government agency are prohibited. This includes voters, observers, and those not there to vote. Election Worker Response to Voter Intimidation. If an election worker observes voter intimidation at a Vote Center, they will contact law enforcement on a non-emergency phone number. Then, the Office of Elections. The Vote Center manager will request the intimidator to leave the property. If the intimidator is a voter waiting to vote, inform the voter that if they do not stop intimidating voters, they will have to leave. Election Worker Response to Escalation. If an emergency occurs during voting days, the Office of Elections will direct Vote Center workers "put safety first." If the situation escalates and de-escalation is unsuccessful, contact law enforcement at 911, then contact the Office of Elections immediately on the emergency hotline. Reporting Voter Intimidation. If voter intimidation occurs at the Vote Center, complete an incident report form providing as much detail as possible about the events that occurred. If possible, the vote, the manager will take a picture of the complete incident report and email or text the report to the Office of Elections. Incidents will be forwarded to the Secretary of State. Appendix F: The Budget and Expected Costs. Are still being worked on and will be available prior to the next public comment period. And that's the conclusion, I think, at this point of the EAP as we're reading it. Do we have any public comment on Zoom? We don't have any public comment on Zoom. So at this point, we'll close the hearing. I wanted to thank our staff for putting all the work into making this happen, the city of Arcata for hosting us, and in particular Juan Carrillo, who made the magic happen and made us all look so professional on screen. Thank you.